The host has stopped your cam.
Mayor, we're good to go.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, with that, welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. This is our regularly scheduled city council meeting on March 2, 2021. Due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform and is live streaming on our City of Burlington YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note, this meeting is being recorded. For public comments this evening or to address the council during the meeting at the appropriate time, you can use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. I will alert our staff that you wish to speak and they will call on you at the appropriate time. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Protam Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City attorney David Huffman. Inorm City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Very good. Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
At your service, sir.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Here.
And Planning Manager Conrad O'Meadow.
Here.
Very good. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Jim Butler.
Let's pray. Lord, as we enter into the early days of March, we're so thankful for the sunshine and for the warmer days and for the reality that spring is just a few weeks away. Father, this is the time of the year that outdoor activities are before us and that optimism is high and the season's starting to change. Lord, we ask that you grant us the wisdom to look at all things with the greatest of optimism. Know that just things will always be ahead and situations that may seem bleak could just be days away from being beautiful and vibrant once again. We're so very thankful for the positive trends with the recent pandemic resulting in less restrictions and more of the freedoms that we once enjoyed. May you continue to guide us through this pandemic, to continue to provide optimism that our lives will soon return to the normalcy that we previously enjoyed. Continue to bless and protect our frontline workers. They have tirelessly worked to care for those that are ill, to risk their own health, for the well-being of others. Continue to bless our city and our city staff as we prepare for the many activities that have been halted for nearly a year and things start opening once again. Lord, continue to lead, guide, and direct this council that we may be provided with the knowledge and wisdom to make the best decisions for the City of Burlington. May we seek your careful hand with each topic discussed for outcomes that are pleasing to you. Thank you for the blessings bestowed upon us and may you continue to bless this city we so dearly love. In your name we pray. Amen.
This time we recognize our interim city clerk.
Good evening, everybody. Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
No.
No. All right. Next, I want, for all the Elon alumni in the room, I want to point out one special thing. It is Elon Day. So for all of us who have a special connection with Elon in the community, we, we thank you and we're excited for all those festivities that have been going on today related to our wonderful university just around the corner. Next on our agenda, we have approvals of minutes before council are the January 12, 2021, special meeting minutes and the January 19, 2021, city council meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Owen, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed from myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, before council are additions to the consent agenda. These are item E, CDBG-funded infrastructure projects, item F, adopt housing rehabilitation assistance policy, and item G memorandum of understanding impact elements use solutions program. Do I hear a motion to approve the additions to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve the additions to the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the agenda with the add-ons. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Protam Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Ward. Any questions regarding the motion to approve the agenda with additions? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to authorize the City of Burlington to retain Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King LLP for their services in the fiscal year 2020-21 annual audit and to authorize the mayor and director of finance and risk management to execute the contracts. Item B, to approve budget amendment 2021-25 for donations made to animal services to offset expenses related to the medical care of animals. Item C, to provide a letter of support for the Burlington Fire Department to apply to receive federally-funded staffing for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant. Item D, to award a 12-month transit service contract extension to TransDev Services, Inc. to provide linked transit, fixed route, and paratransit services for a period of July 1, 2021 to July 30, 2022. Item E, to approve the following public infrastructure projects for the remaining annual allocation of CDBG funds. Item one, North Park Phase 1C, Apple Ridge subdivision, street sidewalk, and Apple Street to Sharp Road sidewalk. Item F, to adopt a City of Burlington Housing Rehabilitation Assistance Policy. And item G, to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Burlington and Impact Aliments for Youth Solutions Program. I do have a request to council. I would like to discuss item A. So if possible, could we have a motion to approve the consent?
Mayor, before we move on, just one point of clarification. I think in item D, you stated July 30. It should be June 30.
July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So again, my request is to move item A from the consent agenda to new business for discussion.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, if we get a motion to move item A to new business.
So moved.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Motion to move item A to new business made by Mayor Protam Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Ward. Any questions regarding the move? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Can I have a motion to approve the other foregoing items on the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve items B through G as stated.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to approve items B through G on the consent agenda, motion by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve those consent agenda items?
No, but just a comment about the generosity of people in Burlington to the animal services program. Some very generous contributions there.
Very good. Any other questions or comments regarding the motion?
I like to underscore that. That's a pretty long list of contributors. You know, a lot of people that I'm very thankful to.
It's, that facility is, has certainly in the service has gained a momentum from people that of all incomes and just sincere interest and it's, I don't know if there's organizations that recognize facilities as our animal service facility is, but certainly if it is, if that's, that's, if that's out there, I think ours would stack up very good against anyone of any size. Not just what city has done, but also what we're talking about tonight, how the community has got behind this. And it's a pretty special, that's a pretty special accomplishment over there.
Very good. Any other questions or comments regarding consent agenda items? All right, all those in favor of approving consent agenda items B through G, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. For the purposes of the agenda, do we, we had moved item A to new business. Do we want to go into that prior to the old business items?
I'm fine with that.
But, all right, so a comp, item A is to authorize the City of Burlington to retain Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King LLP for their services in the fiscal year 2020-2021 annual audit and to authorize the mayor and director of finance and risk management to execute these contracts. A number of years ago, we had had a discussion in, I believe, one of our work sessions about the fiscal prudence of rotating audit firms periodically. And I wanted to bring up, just last week, our National, our North Carolina League of Municipalities Board had the opportunity to meet with state auditor Beth Wood. And one of the items that I asked her was that policy. At the time, our council had decided to continue to enlist Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King since there were no other firms in Burlington that had indicated a desire to take on that audit responsibility. And I, I asked Auditor Wood what her opinion was, and she's actually launching a big fiscal responsibility push for municipalities all across the state right now. And one of the things she indicated that it was absolutely critical that municipalities regularly rotate who audits their finances. She said that is absolutely an industry best practice. And even if you have to go out of your community to find a firm to audit, you should do that because having cold eyes to look at your finances periodically is, is absolutely fundamental to kind of keeping people out of rhythms that allow for financial mismanagement to happen. And so it just so happened that that conversation with the league happened last week and this item popped up on our consent agenda for this meeting. So that's the reason I wanted to pull this off for discussion. Because I still feel that it is prudent and our responsibility to conduct the audit in the most best practice, responsible manner. And it would be my desire that we put that out for bid with alternative firms because it has been over a decade that we've continued to use Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King. Which is far too long by industry best practices and by Auditor Wood's considerations.
You know, there's probably a lot of industry best practices that we don't follow as a city that we could, could dive into and do. What I do like about having Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King is the familiarity of how we operate. And, and I do believe they're good stewards and I certainly believe that our staff works well with them. But most important, I've always felt extremely comfortable calling them and challenging things, whether it was in the Cafford, whether it was diving into questions and items such as that. And I do believe that your comments are certainly with merit, but I have zero concerns about this firm and how they do things. That's just my feelings on it.
Thank you for that feedback, Councilmember.
Auditor Wood is, is indeed focusing on a number of communities around the state. Many of them that are facing financial challenges, some as a result of the economy. And, and many of those challenges there are faced with a lack of professional finance staff that basically prepares the information that goes to the audit at the end of the year. Audit firms are not as easy as one might think to to bring to your community. I, I've seen this on both sides in the last three years. I think the key for us is that we've got a wonderful internal staff that provides information. And I, I don't disagree with her philosophy about changing audit firms, but I, I think I have full confidence in, in the firm we're with right now. So and I like the concept of where we have the opportunity, as Jim said, to at least meet with them once or twice a year and ask specific questions, which if you go to some firms, that's, that's not going to be the case from what I've gathered in the last several years.
Thank you for those comments. Other council questions or comments?
I have a question, Ian. Is it, I mean, other than the fact, you know, just it's a, it's a best practice or is there anything else of concern? I mean, I mean, you know, the auditor says that this is the best practice. Is it, I mean, anything other than that that you can put on the table?
So I think Councilmember Owen can probably elaborate from his work with other communities around the state is even when you think it's a great relationship, over time, the auditor pointed out, things can become too routine and that makes it too easy for embezzlement to happen, for financial malpractice to happen because everybody gets too comfortable and there aren't always kind of the right questions being asked. And so even when you think everything's fine, that's, that's not a good reason to continue to use the same firm. And so it's really about just making sure that you're getting the best advice and the best oversight. And while I agree, yes, there are many different best practices. We have been taking on more and more best practices across the city, whether it's new technology, whether it's new lean management, new systems. And so I think any opportunity we have without significant cost increases, which per the auditor's recommendations, any firm that does municipal audits is going to be very competitive and they're going to offer similar services, whether they're in your community or whether they're not. And so really, it's about our responsibility as kind of overseers of our taxpayers' money and as our community to make sure that we're doing the best job we can to prevent any level of mismanagement.
I think the one advantage that you have with the firm you have now is you have a senior partner who's actually doing the audit. Many of the larger firms across the state, you may have a partner that is assigned, but believe me, most of the work is done by, by, by younger accountants. And I'm, and I'm, I'm not totally opposed to certainly discussing this, but it's municipal audits are not a financial boondoggle for most of these firms. It's, it's, it's intense work. And I just, again, I'm very comfortable with where we are now, but obviously that's just, that's just my opinion and all due respect to what the mayor's saying.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, it's just, it is a comfort to be able to pick up the phone and call somebody that you've got a lot of history with. I've sat through a lot of meetings with them. I've called them on things in the past. Certainly the Caffers, a big jumping off point for us and the annual review. But just little things that this firm has brought to the table. I remember when they specifically really challenged us on a segregation of duties and how important that was as, as a best practice that they brought to us. And, you know, we've seen the benefits of a lot of the little things that they've done along the way. They're vested, their person, their, their very reputation is vested in this community of doing a, a, a top-level, top-shelf body of work for us. And, you know, I, I agree that, that it's a valid discussion, but I certainly have no concerns nor beliefs that they're not giving us 100% of their attention in a lot of areas. And to Harold's point, our city staff is, over the years, I've watched our city staff mature in, in the areas of fiscal management. And I think that's got a lot to do with the relationship with Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King and some of the things that we've learned along the way. So I'm completely comfortable with them.
The, the, actually, even at the golf course, I can tell you that the auditor, that they spot audits on things as small as how many cokes and Gatorades are in the cooler. And when they go out, the staff has to count every Coke and Gatorade out there to see in terms of it been accounted for. That's something that's really picked up, I'd say, Peggy, in the last three years. You know, again, I, 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 I'm certainly open for suggestions, but I, I think it's a I'm still very much in favor, if we can, to do business with our local business people.
Agreed.
People who are leaders in the community, who are, I think, trusted and vetted. And, you know, I just have always felt very strongly about that.
That's my opinion too. Ian, and I do think that it's right that you bring this up. And I certainly would not imagine that we would change this year on, on any account because it would not be fair to the company itself. But the local people, I think, do such a good job for us that I don't, I don't feel need to do that. If I had a twinge of disrespect for them or felt as though something wasn't happening or if staff felt that we needed to make a change, then I would certainly look at that seriously. But for, I stick with the hometown people as much as possible.
Yeah, and there's a certain level of risk with, with changing because the decision of who you go with could lead us down a path of fiscal danger and then we're just as responsible for that. Just the, the level of service that we've received from them, I'm not sure we'll receive from anyone else, at least to the, to the, in, in depth nature that they put forth because we are, they are in our hometown. They care about their reputation and their relationship with us.
Well, I don't think we'd ever consider some of these firms, one of the biggest issues that this has drawn the ire of the state auditor is the, the conscious or the consistent tardiness of towns getting their audit turned in on time. Often, that's, is a combination of inadequate staffing at the municipal level throughout the year and having information prepared for the auditor, auditor review, but also small audit firms that simply don't have the staff to meet these guidelines. And I can assure you, and I totally agree with this, that the, actually, was actually spoke to you today at the local government commission meeting, that the, the state auditor is intensely interested in making sure that cities get their audits in on time. And there's some neighboring communities that we have here of our small communities that consistently deal with firms that keep telling them, well, we'll be ready next week or the following week or the following week. They're on an annual basis late getting the audits turned in and now that's drawing the ire, as it should, of the state auditor and also of all the members of the local government commission. So I, I just, I think we got a really good firm and I just thinking as a manager, they have been enormously, were enormously helpful in us in identifying issues that we needed to resolve or we needed to improve upon. And I was always very appreciative of that.
I have one, a couple of comments to you and it's that I've had a lot of interaction with, you know, with, you know, with Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King and a lot in the last several months and I have over the years. And I've been extremely pleased with the relationship. And I think to pick up on what Jim says, you know, we can get on the phone and communicate with them and it's absolutely not any problem in making that, making that, you know, contact. And I don't know how it would be to mother firm. It very well could be, but I'm, I'm well pleased with their services and, and I would, I would certainly like to say I stay with them. You know, if we want to talk about it in the future, there's one thing, but I'm, I'm very pleased with the services they provided and they've been a big help to the City of Burlington.
Thank you for all those comments. I do appreciate everyone's comments and passion regarding this item and I respect your comments, but it continues to raise a red flag. Anytime I hear comfort and long-term relationship, those are exactly, I mean, while that doesn't mean that there's any untrustworthy action going on, it still can indicate a level of complacency. And it's the same reason when you, when we can bring in consultants or experts on other areas within our city, those provide new insights and perspective on the things that we do day in and day out. And so I think changing audit firms is simply an opportunity to bring brand-new eyes who are skilled in the field of municipal audits. I'm not proposing to go with some small firm that is not capable of dealing with our financial audit in a timely manner. But I think it, it would be prudent for the city in the future to consider that thoroughly. But I do respect the will of council at the present time to continue to use Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King. But it would make my request that at appropriate time, leading into next year's audit selection decision, for us to engage in a more thorough conversation. Any further questions or comments on this or do I hear a motion to approve item A?
Make a motion to approve item A.
A second.
Motion to approve item A and the contract with Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. At this time, we move to old business. Item number one, city council will consider adopting a resolution authorizing the sale and issuance by the City of Burlington of its combined enterprise system refunding bonds, Series 2021B, authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection therewith. This time, I'd like to recognize our Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese. Welcome, Peggy.
Mayor and council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight, I'm briefly going to go, briefly go over a little bit of history for the benefit of any first-time viewers that we have. You may recall back at the December council work session, staff asked council for permission to send out a private bank RFP for refinancing the Series 2010 and 2011 revenue bonds. At the January 19 council meeting, staff reported that the city received seven responses to the RFP, the top bid offering a 1.33% interest rate with savings of approximately $6 million over the remaining life of the revenue bonds or about $400,000 per year. Council approved a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission requesting that they sell the bonds at a private sale and authorize and approve the selection of the financing team in connection with the sale and issuance of the revenue refunding bonds. As a reminder, the city closed on refinancing the 2010 Series A and Series B revenue bonds on February 19. We are here tonight for the second half, refinancing the 2011 revenue bonds, which will be refunded with the Refunded with the two thousand twenty-one Bs revenue bond. At the end of two thousand seventeen, federal tax tax law changed and eliminated tax-exempt advanced refunding. Due to this legislation, banks have created what is called a Cinderella option. In very basic terms, the bonds are issued as taxable. Until the original bonds are eligible for tax-exempt status. The two thousand eleven revenue bonds are about one year away from being eligible. To refund these bonds with a tax-exempt refinancing. Therefore, the Cinderella option allows the city. The issue a taxable bond for the first year and then issue tax-exempt bonds for the remaining years. Tonight, staff recommends that council approve the attached resolution. Authorizing the sale and issuance by the city of its combined enterprise revenue refunding bonds, series. Two thousand twenty-one B and authorizing the mayor, city manager, and director of finance and risk management to sign and execute the delivery of documents in connection herewith. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Peggy. Any questions regarding this item from council? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Do I hear a second? Motion to approve the resolution made by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any question regarding the motion to approve resolution? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you very much, Peggy.
Thank you, council.
With that, we'll move to our public hearing, so that have been scheduled for this evening. Item number two on our agenda, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider adopting a resolution to support. Of Project Mongoose's application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant. To be utilized in the redevelopment of property located at four twenty-three Lakeside Avenue. This time, I'd like to recognize our Economic Development Director, Peter Bishop. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's great to be with you tonight. I will be doing a short presentation on my event today, so. Give me one moment to pull up the screen, and hopefully you are seeing a presentation with a large building in the letter B in the middle.
We've got the Atlantic Bank and Trust Building in front of us now.
Fantastic. Well, I'll go ahead and get started today. So our presentation agenda for the day. I'm going to introduce the project, who are Mongoose LLC and Noah Living. We'll introduce the principles of the firm to you all. Talk about the proposed project and renovation at four twenty-three Lakeside Avenue. Will review the building reuse grant process of the State Department of Commerce and then leave some time for summary and some questions. So Project Mongoose, Mongoose LLC is actually the name of a holding company doing business as Noah Living. Noah Living is a luxury goods manufacturer and import-export business. They design, they upcycle, and this is a new and trendy term in fashion and in home design. It's actually taking. A once-used product and turning it into a new product, whether artistic or with other form and function. It is certainly a growing trend to use previously utilized items in an upcycling fashion. So that is something that this firm specializes in. There are generations of experience in craft and luxury goods and textiles within. Sam, the principal's family and other members of the firm, so this their expertise goes back very long ways. Their current showroom location is in Raleigh. So currently, items are being manufactured overseas and through partnered or sister companies and then imported into the U.S. for resale. This project would purport to onshore that manufacturing and those partnerships here in Burlington. And to create a design center and manufacturing center in the Lakeside Mill. This slide shows a couple of the examples of the products that are manufactured and designed by Noah Living. These are, these different rugs and carpets are from the Energy Fields collection that was designed by. Fida and Eva, who will be joining us shortly, and then in the bottom left-hand corner is a picture from the showroom in at the Triangle Town Center that these folks operate. To give you a local reference for a firm that's similar to this, Scram Furniture, it would be a comparable firm that's very similar to what Noah Living does. Noah Living also is a regular presenter and exhibitor at the High Point Furniture Market and other similar high-end luxury goods furniture markets of the same type. This is now my opportunity to introduce you the team of Noah Living and hopefully. Sam, Fida, and Eva can join and introduce themselves and and just give a little bit of background about their firm themselves and why they're interested in Burlington, so. I'm going to stop sharing for a moment, and if. Who who wants to go first here? Eva, I see I see Eva's face in front of me here, and then we have also Fida. And Sam Nimi, the CEO and managing partner for the firm. Sam, would you like to start us off?
Okay, I am the CEO of the company. Background, my background, education-wise, I'm a structural engineer and it's a statistical profession. I have experience about thirty-five years in this family business. And. We are excited to bring some of our operation from overseas here into North Carolina. And we looked at the mill, it's a pretty suitable from many angles to our operation. And we are very excited. We're going to create really a minimum of twenty-four jobs, high-paying job, and. We're gonna perform and do some really exciting products, so I'm looking forward to it.
I'm Fida Nimi. I don't know where my photo is. I am a design principal and partner at Noah Living. I'm, thank you for this evening. We are very excited about becoming a member of the. Burlington community. I studied architecture undergraduate and graduate degree at NC State University. Medbin and Burlington are, I'm very familiar with them and have very dear friends since I moved to Raleigh in the mid-seventies. I'm very excited about what we plan to do. In in Burlington, we're very, we were so excited when we saw the mill and being architects and structural engineers, Eva's an architect as well. We thought there was a direct link to what we're doing because we work in textiles, and this is a textile mill, and the fact that we will be rebuilding. The mill, we will be adding a positive infrastructure, and we're very excited about that. I'll let Eva introduce herself.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity, for letting us meet you and talk to you about Noah Living and about Mongoose. So very briefly, I have known Fida and Sam for a very long time. Fida and I went to state together where we both studied architecture. And what they've been in business and and what I've been doing for the last, oh, I don't know, twenty-five years is. I've been a full-time college professor at the Rhode Island School of Design, and so I'm very much immersed in design process and. The whole idea of taking what's considered a waste stream material, in our case, that would be used textiles, used clothing. That kind of thing, and upcycling them is really what's going on with with young designers today because they realize the need to. Redefine what what usable materials are, redefine what useful raw materials are. And so our innovative approach to this is that we, there are really two businesses. There's Noah, Noah Living. Okay, which is the showroom in Raleigh, and we do invite you all to come and see our stuff. But the other business is Noah Greenworks, which is, which is the recycling aspect of the company that Sam's family has been involved with for a very, very long time. So our innovative kind of combination of these two things is that we do make high-end luxury materials. Our carpets are. Made of virgin New Zealand wool and mulberry silk. And people that that can afford to buy our products care about where things are made, they care about how they're made. They're, they care about who makes them, what kind of working conditions they have. And increasingly, they care about a kind of sustainability aspect of things that they want to buy. They want products that they can feel good about buying, and we want to make products that people can feel good about buying. So it's the upcycling part. And integrating the that that so-called waste stream into into our process and and making luxury goods, that's really the innovation. I'm happy to say that we are not at the very bleeding edge of technology here, okay? We don't have to. Write our own software, we don't have to develop our own machinery, these processes are understood. The process that we, and I can elaborate further if anybody's interested, the process that we are most. Invested in uses no water and no toxic chemicals, and we like that. So the mill is a beautiful historic building. We've been researching it. It's built in eighteen ninety-three. We, we really want to be there, and we love that mill. We, I think. All those old mill buildings need to be kept, okay? We don't want it to be torn down. The the seller actually wants to demolish it. And we don't want him to do that. So that's, that's my pitch.
Great. Thank you very much to Sam, Fida, and Eva for giving us that perspective. I'm going to go back to resharing my screen and completing this presentation. So the project details itself, as Eva, Sam, and Fida alluded to, the company is proposing to purchase the Lakeside Mill property. It is one of the oldest surviving mills constructed within the city of Burlington. It was built by. The Holt Brothers, the sons of the 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 original patriarch. This project would create twenty-four new jobs at an average salary of over fifty-one thousand dollars over the two-year period of the grant. And investing three point nine million in personal property, that's machinery, equipment, and other stocks. And additional money into the building for the renovation as well, so certainly a significant investment proposed for the Lakeside Mill property. So the project, in working with the city of Burlington, has requested a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the Building Reuse Fund. That grant will go toward offsetting over six hundred thousand dollars in renovation costs over the first two years of this project. The local match in this program, and I'll get to these details in a moment, is five percent of the total or ten thousand dollars. City Economic Development Staff budgets money specifically for the Building Reuse Program and other grant matches. So we already have that money for the match allocated in the budget. No amendments are required. And in our initial calls and discussions with the North Carolina Department of Commerce and the funding group. They have expressed an interest in funding this project and are very interested in seeing it happen. So the project, as it relates to the building itself, it's interesting, we're talking about upcycling because really what. Noah Living's talking about doing is upcycling the Lakeside Mill, taking this once, you know, historic spinning mill and dying and finishing facility and upcycling it to a new. Design and manufacturing center. The building was known for chambray cloth and making hickory work shirts for many years. Its busiest time was not long after it opened, and then it was, of course, run by Anadine Hosery Mills and later the Harris Family as the Lakeside Dying and Finishing Property. It was placed on the National Register in nineteen eighty-four, and the surrounding mill villages also in the National Register. A lot of those homes remain in pretty good condition, and it's relatively intact as a mill and mill village, so a really neat area if you ever have a chance to go by the Lakeside Mill. And then I I listed a few things that work's going to include, but to be frank, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to this property. There's in addition some plumbing. And some other things that need to happen, so this building is proposed to get a full makeover by Noah Living to be their new headquarters. So into some specifics about the Building Reuse Grant, this would be potentially our third building reuse reuse grant at the city of Burlington. Beg your pardon. This program was originally in the North Carolina Rural Center, Rural Economic Development Agency that was in the state for many years. It was transferred to the Department of Commerce in twenty thirteen. And that's where we are applying for funding. The cap of the the grant is five hundred thousand dollars, and applicants are able to get. Up to fifty percent of their eligible project costs fulfilled through this program. The funds are awarded in a little different setup than other state incentives. The funds are awarded directly to the local government, who then contracts with the company to undertake the project. So there is an agreement between the state of North Carolina and the city of Burlington, and an agreement between the city of Burlington and the company. So the the city really acts as the fiscal agent and the grant agent for these funds, and we are the grant administrator as well. If you give me one moment, I'm going to get a drink of water. The local government in granting these funds and being the fiscal agent then has the option to take a security position. By filing a deed of trust to secure the two hundred thousand dollar grant, so. A couple moving parts that I'll review again. Different than other incentive programs, the Building Reuse Program allocates dollars to the city. The city then turns and contracts with the company to create the jobs and do the investment and manage the project. So in turn, we file that deed of trust to secure that investment and make sure that we have protection in case of default. And then finally, as I've referenced, Building Reuse Grants really are a valuable incentive and redevelopment tool. This is a targeted program that looks specifically at underutilized industrial properties and suburban and rural communities throughout North Carolina. Often, as we've seen, certainly and have experience with in Burlington, the cost to renovate these facilities or make them no longer functionally obsolete. Is incredibly expensive, and you can add additional expense whenever it's a historic property as well, so. It's very challenging to get funds to renovate these properties, and this Building Reuse Program is one of the best avenues to do so. And then finally, as we all know, Burlington is a great fit for this program. In in counting and looking at some of the different mills that we have, there are fifteen large former textile mills currently in Burlington that are used for. Ancillary storage or are vacant. This program would take another one of those off of the list. We were successful in taking a property two years ago off of that list of undeveloped or vacant properties. So we're making progress in denting away at that list and using all the funds available and all the tools available to help businesses do so. And then, of course, we had two very successful projects in twenty nineteen that you all will remember. Flex Oss created forty-seven jobs and invested three point seven million dollars on a building in Tucker Street. They will be wrapping up their Building Reuse Grant in the next couple of months. And then National On-Demand purchased the former Bank of America building in downtown Burlington, and they have just filed their paperwork to close out that grant. They've actually created more than the promised thirty-three jobs and invested more than the six hundred and twelve thousand dollars that they said they would invest, so. Our performance on our previous two Building Reuse Grants has been positive, and the company's, obviously, National On-Demand is using their building. In downtown Burlington as their front page for their Facebook page. I think that's a pretty good indication of their happiness with their location and with this program and working with the city. So in summary, the Building Reuse Program leverages a lot of additional investment for a small amount of city investment. So our five percent takes us a long way in attracting more dollars and more investment to our community. Project Mongoose and Noah Living, while we're looking at a two-year window based on the grant cycle and the grant award. Noah Living has plans to invest past that two-year period and to do even more. Because we're just focusing on those two years, I'm not talking a lot about that, but the total project over five years scopes to bring in over fifty jobs. And invest even more dollars in Burlington and expand onto that building, so. There's promise for more economic development through this project in later years. The the third point is that we do have a a security interest in the property that can protect our grant. And we're we're excited about that opportunity to to secure this investment. And then probably the the biggest target, our economic development plan, our comprehensive plan from twenty fifteen. All identified redevelopment and identifying vacant industrial buildings, specifically textile buildings, as important to. Our community and finding new uses and new jobs and new investment in those properties. In addition to this property fitting that bill, we're also doing a project within a low-to-moderate income area. That frankly has not seen this type of investment in a good period of time, so we're excited about bringing a project. To a building that needs it and bringing jobs to a neighborhood that certainly needs it. That concludes my presentation. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that council may have at this time. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you to Sam, Fida, and Eva for joining us this evening. We're definitely excited that you're looking at Lakeside Mill. I've walked through that property. And it is a beautiful old structure that needs some love nestled right near our downtown. So I was wondering if you could elaborate a little more on the reuse stream? And if you're able to use materials that are locally generated as waste or kind of where those are sourced from?
Eva, Fida, or Sam, do you want to cover this question?
I'll answer the question. Most of the material is going to be locally generated. And of course, depending on volume, as we grow, we're going to bring a lot more material to process. So we'll expand our circle into North Carolina and hopefully outside North Carolina. But we start first with, of course, locally generated material.
That's very good. Anytime you can shorten that supply line.
Yes.
For it to use locally. Great. Other council questions before we begin the public hearing?
Very exciting project.
Yeah, it's pretty cool when the project is named Mongoose. Why can you not like that? Secondly, when you got North Carolina State Architects, why can you not like that? Third, it really is a cool building that brings back a lot of history to people in the community. And I just see but nothing but wonderful results for that entire community. It would bring real energy back, and this is pretty exciting.
How cool is it to take the history of the city and that facility and look forward to this type of project and tie those two together?
Absolutely. It's great. This is really, yeah, I agree, Jim.
We are very excited.
Yeah.
Very good. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll begin our public hearing. All right. With that, we will open our public hearing. And so if anyone is joining us on the Zoom call who wishes to speak on public hearing number two, on our item number two on our agenda, now would be the time to use the raise hand function in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. We'll take just a moment. If anyone wishes to join in for the public hearing. And again, if anyone's having any technical difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440. He can assist you. Again, now is the time regarding item two on our agenda under public hearings. Use the raise hand feature or star nine on your phone. All right, it looks like we have no comments. I'm going to call on City Attorney Huffman to brief us on the public hearing procedure pursuant to state statute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, this is a follow-up to many communications I've had with each of you over the last month pertaining to North Carolina General Statute 166A-1924E, which the legislature passed in May, on May 4 of last year, to try to facilitate and accommodate remote meetings of public bodies like yourself, but also specifically, subparagraph E addresses public hearings. And if I could just read this, "A public body may conduct any public hearing required or authorized by law during a remote meeting and take action their own, provided the public body allows for written comments on the subject of the public hearing to be submitted between publication of the required notice 24 hours after the public hearing." To comply with that, I am advising that what we need to do henceforth with our public hearings is to turn around and you do not close the public hearing today, but you in fact continue the public hearing over to a date and time certain to allow the city clerk to receive any written comments from the public for the next 24 hours. Then you go back into session at that time and date that you indicate. And when you do, it'll come in under unfinished business. And the mayor will simply ask, have there been any additional or any written comments to which the clerk will either read them into the record or have provided to them, to you, prior to that continuation date? And then at that point in time, you make a motion to close the public hearing. And after that's done, so you take action on whatever the substance is of the public hearing. Now, in talking with you over the course of the last month about this, facing numerous public hearings, many of you, most of you indicated that you would prefer to put it over two weeks to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. And then at that point in time, it would come in under unfinished business. And that would be what you would start with, of course, that evening. I actually communicated with each of you earlier this day pertaining to these two public hearings on tonight, including this one here, and I indicated that that would be March the 16th. I need to bring something to your attention. I think time on this particular public matter here pertaining to Mongoose, the legal term "time is of the essence" may be what we need to take into consideration. This is a competitive grant. Mr. Bishop needs to finalize this with the Commerce Department down in Raleigh, probably tomorrow, and make sure that these folks are in line to get the money. If that's the, if the council chooses to go forward and do that. So what we're really asking the council to do on this one, as well as the next one, is possibly consider coming back into session on Thursday of this week and follow the procedure I just indicated, so that this matter can be acted upon and Mr. Bishop could facilitate this grant. If you choose to do that, I would also indicate that with the UDO modifications on the item three that's before you, in just a few minutes, you can do the same thing for that purpose. In the future, you can set that continuation date anytime that you choose, including two weeks hence, at your regularly scheduled meeting. Do let me know for the public that this is only for purposes of the state of emergency, COVID state of emergency that we're in right now. Once the state of emergency ends, unless the state legislature takes further action, this sort of remote meeting is not going to be possible. And these sort of public hearings, issues of public hearings, will not be an issue for us.
Very good. Thank you, attorney. So recognizing the urgency on this and the desire to move this project along, as we've expressed that it's very fitting for our community, do I hear a motion from council pursuant to Attorney Huffman's memo to continue this to a date and time on Thursday?
Well, I think given "time is of the essence," so I would assume that you would want to do this first thing Thursday. Obviously, is that true, Peter?
So the situation that we have is we are working on the grace of the Department of Commerce in trying to get this application done as soon as possible. Of course, a lot of economic developers were not aware of the implications of that legislation and how it kind of stacks the calendar against some of these time-sensitive projects. There is some concern that this being a highly competitive grant program, that more complete applications in front of the eyes of grant makers sooner rather than later would be better. So that is why the request and the statement of "time is of the essence" is important here.
So Peter, just give us a straight-up answer. Do you need it done Thursday?
Well, I was unable to get direct confirmation from the Department of Commerce. So this is somewhat secondhand, but the sooner the better, sir.
Okay.
But to staff, would a 9:00 AM meeting on Thursday be feasible?
Yes.
So.
Well, I'm speaking for myself. I apologize.
Well, and then I'll turn to council members. Do we have a quorum of council members who would be able to attend a virtual meeting at 9:00 AM on Thursday?
9:15. I could make 9:15.
9:15?
Sounds good. And these are written comments only, David? Is that correct?
It is correct. There is really no further oral comments taken at that point in time. In fact, it would be very brief, and then y'all get on with your decision.
Okay.
So with that, recognizing Mayor Pretem Hikes' request for a 9:15 start, do I hear a motion to continue this to Thursday at 9:15 AM?
Right, making motion?
Yep.
Second.
Okay. Motion to continue pursuant to NCGS 166A-19.24E to move this to a Thursday meeting at 9:15 AM, made by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? Attorney Huffman, does that satisfy the need for the motion?
It does.
Very good. All right. With that, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pretem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Sam, Fida, and Eva, we thank you very much for your attendance this evening. We are working to get this done ASAP pursuant to the statutes that we are working within. We appreciate your interest in our community and the Lakeside Mill project. And we will be back in Zoom at 9:15 on Thursday morning to keep things moving for you. So any other questions for us regarding this process and the agenda item in front of us?
Thank you for scheduling this special meeting. I appreciate you making that accommodation. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to item three on our agenda. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider approving text amendment number four to the Unified Development Ordinance adopted November 1, 2019, and last amended on October 20, 2020. This time, I'll recognize Planning Manager Conrad O'Meadow. Welcome, Conrad.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Before you, as an item, to consider the approval of the Fourth Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment. These text amendments were presented to you all on the February 1 City Council Work Session after they had been reviewed and approved unanimously or recommended for approval unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 25. Joining us this evening is Mr. Chad Meadows with Code Right Consultants. And he will be giving us a brief presentation overview of the text amendments before your consideration this evening at the public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to hear you. I don't know if you can see me or not. I'm clicking on Start Video, but it says I cannot start video because the host has stopped it. So I'm not quite sure what's going on with that. I am going to attempt to share my screen. Yeah, and I'm not able to do that either, so.
It does look like you've been turned on as a host, so you may have the ability to turn on your video and share.
I can see you. Hello. Good evening. Very quick meeting for us tonight. I do not, I know you guys are very busy, so I will not take up a lot of your time. As Conrad had mentioned, we talked a little bit about this last month. So this is UDOTA 0121. It's a handful of very, very basic adjustments to the UDO text. Essentially, we are trying to ease redevelopment of existing buildings in the CBD district, continue to encourage more and more use mixing, change our density rules slightly to round up instead of down, amend the definition of "family," and add just a little bit more clarification. I'll go through these slides very, very quickly. This is the summary table of dimensional standards in the CBD district from page 3-7 of the UDO. And you can see a couple of redline changes where we have simplified and allowed for unlimited residential densities in existing structures and simplified some of the open space and set aside requirements. Again, this is intended to foster reuse of existing structures without requiring a lot of variances or other adjustments to comply with dimensional requirements that were drafted after these buildings were built. We've made some similar adjustments to the livework dwelling and upper-story residential use standards in Chapter 4, clarifying that ground floor areas of these buildings may be used for residential purposes, provided if there is a non-residential portion to the building, that it have its own entrance and that that portion, the non-residential portion, be on the front facade at the street level. So just opening the door a little bit to recognizing situations where people may need to have some residential floor area on the ground floor, but not sacrificing the primarily commercial nature of the structures. Some further adjustments to the mixed-use and multifamily design standards, basically exempting renovation of existing structures in the CBD district from complying with these standards. Again, this is for reuse of an existing structure, not for redevelopment, which would be subject to some of the standards. So we're just trying to encourage people coming into these existing buildings by not requiring them to make changes to the exterior facades. More use mixing. Essentially, we had integrated this concept of vertical integration. In other words, ground floor non-residential residential uses on upper floors. That was a part, is a part of the current UDO. We're suggesting that it be relaxed a little bit and that we allow for some ground floor residential in certain circumstances, like the ones that I've mentioned earlier. So that necessitated a couple of adjustments to some definitions you see for mixed use and vertically integrated mixed-use development, as well as some clarification in the mixed-use design standards about non-residential development being able to share the ground floor with residential. Density rounding, I mentioned, that we are trying to accommodate increased residential density. Our suggestion here is to simply change the rounding equation from rounding downwards to rounding upwards. You see in the middle of the screen an example where this particular development would have gotten one residential unit. Its density was 1.28. Under the current code, that would yield one unit. Under the changes we're suggesting, that would yield two units. Again, we're trying to maximize efficiency and encourage densification where appropriate. Family definition. We had a somewhat antiquated definition of "family" that included servants and was limited to two unrelated persons. We've increased that to three unrelated persons and got rid of the antiquated language. Finally, a couple minor clarifications. The HDR, the High Density Residential District, on page 316. We went in and changed the words "none" or "NA" in hopes of making it more clear for code readers. And then finally, just some very minor changes in the non-conforming lots of record provisions. We missed a portion of a sentence that should have been dropped out in a previous redline addition. So that's it. A very short list of minor adjustments, but with a lot of impact for your consideration tonight. Understand that this is our public hearing, that if the council wishes to move forward with these, that we would hold open or continue the hearing until March 4, which is certainly suitable for me. No problem there. And that is the extent of my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Very good. Thank you, Chad. Any questions from council? So Chad, it's my understanding that a lot of these changes regarding the mixed use and the density were kind of just little hiccups that we ran into in the application of the UDO in real-life projects and redevelopment that people are trying to do in our community. And so it's just a fine-tuning of those to make them functional for our existing environment. Is that correct?
That is absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. Particularly in the CBD district, we didn't make a lot That is absolutely right, Mr. Mayor, particularly in the CBD district. We didn't make a lot of change to those current standards. And, you know, blissfully, happily, you guys are getting a lot of development requests in the CBD, and so we want to do everything we can to facilitate that and encourage that. And a lot of this is in response to, to, to that demand that's, that exists. I think it's, it's a positive for the city, and this will help position the UDO to facilitate more of that kind of renovation and reoccupation of existing empty structures.
Very good. Any other council questions? All right. We will begin this public hearing. So if you wish to speak regarding item three on our agenda, the public hearing regarding the UDO, now would be the time to use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine on your phone. So if you do wish to comment on those, please use the raise hand feature or star nine at this time. And again, if you are experiencing any technical difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at three three six five one three five four four zero. Also, our clerk has indicated that there were no written comments submitted via email or physical snail mail regarding this item. Extra snail mail these days. Again, now is the time to use raise hand or star nine to speak on item three on our agenda today's evening. All right. Hearing no requests for comments, do I hear a motion pursuant to NCGS statute one six six A nineteen point two four E from council to continue this meeting? And as mentioned by Chad, the, since we now have a special meeting on Thursday, this can be included on that.
Oh, move.
Second.
Motion to continue this hearing pursuant to NCGS statute one six six A nineteen point two four E to Thursday, March fourth at nine fifteen AM, made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to continue? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Chad, thank you for joining us again.
Thank you so much. You guys have a great night.
Chad, before you go, and Nolan, you mentioned earlier the, the, the activity we've got in, in certain development zones, and in reference to the update to the UDO is or is it, is there correlation there of what was done with the UDO in terms of what the interest might be now that had not presently been there?
Nolan, I don't know if you want, if you want to start or you'd like me to start?
I mean, I, I think what you've seen is with the UDO, with some of the changes that were made with particularly residential development, it is allowing a lot of the product that we saw being proposed in previous developments that required conditional rezoning. So it allows some additional density that doesn't require some of the conditional rezonings that we had before.
I'll echo that and, and indicate to you that what I've noticed lately, and what I mean by lately is in the last six or seven months, whatever it is you're doing, you're doing something right. You're getting more interest in your urban centers and your major corridors. And that was really one of the goals of the comprehensive plan. You know, I think Mr. Bishop mentioned, you know, the comp plan looks to, you know, redevelop a lot of the existing structures that are kind of in the urban core of Burlington, and for whatever reason, you're getting much more attention, you know, in those locations and, and more power to you. I think that that's, that's good. I think that the demand that we're seeing is in fact stronger than what we expected. We had created a form-based code option for the downtown, but what we're seeing is sort of smaller scale pioneers coming back into downtown and wanting to, you know, fill existing structures. That's, that's, that's a positive. I, you know, again, the, the CBD district really didn't change that much between what you had on the books before and what we've included in the, in the UDO. And this adjustment that we've made is actually broadening those old CBD district provisions that were really carried forward unchanged. So I, I think things are moving in the right direction, and I frankly think that you'll probably see more of this kind of change coming in the future. Staff is working with a lot of applicants and finding not necessarily problems, but looking for ways to facilitate more beneficial redevelopment. And, you know, we are already in conversation about adjustments on some site feature provisions to allow more of that to take place. So I, I mean, again, I, whatever it is you're doing, keep doing it because it seems to be working.
And Chad, we did have our first planned development design come before, first one.
I haven't heard about that. That's exciting.
Yeah, how about that? It, it was pretty cool. It looks pretty cool.
Awesome. That's great.
Well, we thank both of you guys and also Conrad for, for your work on this. This is you know, I think this is an opportunity that we, we have to take advantage of. And certainly set the stage for people to to feel like they can come here and, and, and do things of this nature is, is really important for the community.
Agreed. Thank you so much.
Very good. Any other council questions or comments? I would like to note that we, as noted previously with the continuations of these public hearings, our public comments for written comment, those are slated for Thursday at nine fifteen AM. Meeting invite information and how to join in on that meeting will be posted later this evening. So if anyone is interested in joining in on that meeting on Thursday morning, bright and early at nine fifteen AM, you'll find out soon on the city website per where we post all these other meeting items. If you do wish to send written comments, you can do so at the public comments at burlingtonnc.gov. All right. With that, we will move on to our public comment period. This is for general public comments. So if you wish to make a general public comment regarding something not on the agenda this evening, now is that time. And so if you do wish to do so, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. And if you are having any technical connection difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at three three six five one three five four four zero. So while folks are making that indication, our clerk has indicated that there were no written comments submitted for this meeting. So again, for the open general public comments, now is the time to use the raise hand feature or star nine. If you're using a rotary phone, I'm not really sure what you're supposed to do there, but. All right. It does look like Alex Alfonso has a request to speak. Mr. Alfonso, if you could state your name and address for the public record.
Alejandro Alfonso, eleven oh five Hawthorne Avenue, or I'm sorry Hawthorne Lane. Everyone can hear me okay?
We can.
Uh, great. I wanted to comment, express my disappointment in the presentation to council yesterday concerning the disc golf possibility at the Valley Golf Course. I found a lot of the information that was passed last night was outdated and somewhat misleading. And I'm hoping some of the numbers and information I shared with you tonight will have you reconsider that recommendation. A couple of months ago, I spoke with Rob Newcomer. He runs the New World Sports Complex in Jacksonville, Florida. They have a hybrid course there, a, a disc golf course that shares space with a traditional golf course. He told me they generate, he generates just on the disc golf business, thirty thousand dollars a month. That's thirty thousand dollars a month. He sells three hundred to four hundred discs a week out of the pro shop, and that's what he orders also to, to replenish. He also sells food beverages, adult beverages there. He told me that disc golfers will often wait an hour to an hour and a half for a cart to play on the golf course. While they're waiting, he sells them discs, food, beer. And they haven't had any issues between disc golf and golf. He says it's, it's one of the best things that's happened to the course. One of the things he told me is that because this, this place is also surrounded by free to play courses that, that you can just go ahead to public park and play. A lot of people, when he first opened up, was like, ah, this isn't, you know, I'm not going to come and pay to play here because we have these other places. He tells me those same people in a month or two came with a friend or something like that, played the course, rented a car, bought a beer, maybe bought a disc, something like that. And he says from then on, they come back and they tell him all the time, you know, this is my place. Again, it's very successful operation there. I want to tell you about another guy I spoke with in pick, I, I don't know if I've got this town's name right. Peaking or Peckin, Illinois. It's right outside of Peoria, thirty five thousand people is the population. The Seth Frederick there, he had a friend whose father owns a country club, Sunset Hills golf course or a country club there in Peckin or Peaking. And he convinced him to install a disc golf course there. They then were able to land a couple of big tournaments there. Two thousand nineteen Ledgestone Insurance Open, which Joni Staley, the Director of Sales for the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau in Illinois, said that generated an economic impact of one million dollars, one million fifty seven thousand and nine hundred and twenty nine dollars to be exact. Later that year, they also hosted the PDGA Professional Disc Golf World Championships, and that had a direct impact of three million, two hundred thousand, uh, two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. That's, uh, isn't the only, uh, successful, uh, hybrid course that, 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 that I was able to, to find here. There was also in Escondido, California, Reedy Creek Golf Course. It's a municipal course that also has a foot golf course. They saw a two thousand dollar increase in revenue from a single disc golf tournament on a temporary setup. This was in January of two thousand and nineteen. That's, that's pre-pandemic. Later that year, they invested nine thousand dollars in eighteen disc golf baskets, associated equipment, and made the layout permanent in May. By June, they had paid off their investment, and disc golf now accounts for ten to thirty percent in revenue. And that's according to Steve Lyons. That's the head golf pro there in Escondido. And, and this isn't the only course in California. Goat Hill Golf Course in, I believe, Oceanside, California, has a hybrid golf course. There was a couple more towns in Florida. I also want to tell you about Harmony Benz, which is in Columbia, Missouri. They have a disc golf course there that's ranked twentieth or within the top twenty in the world of disc golf courses. Zach Franklin, who's a sports sales supervisor for the Columbia, Missouri Convention and Visitors Bureau, said that the course has generated a total economic impact from anywhere from a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'd also mention that five, uh, the top five disc golf courses in the world ranked are all pay-to-play courses. And again, all of them, all of these courses are surrounded by free public parks where you can go play in disc golf. So the notion that disc golf, because you have a free course, they won't pay for a course where you're offering something like a hybrid setup, it, it, it just doesn't hold water. The last thing I wanted to bring up, as, as speaking of the top disc golf courses in the, in the country, I had a disc golf course designer come out to the valley to, to check out the layout and, and look over it. His name's Jay Pontier. He was able to map out twenty four disc golf holes over the eighteen hole setup at the valley. Jay Pontier, he's based out of Cary, North Carolina. He is the president of the Capital Area Disc Golf League. He has done, he's working right now on a disc golf course at Falls Lake State Park. He's worked extensively with the city of Cary. And he is, and he created the Diablo Disc Golf Course in New Hope there in Cary, and that has generated a huge impact there in the city. I'd encourage you to speak with him. But he is the one that is very interested in doing the, the disc golf course here at the valley. And Diablo is ranked number seven in the world for disc golf courses. These were really impressive numbers to me. It's not something that I expected to find when I started looking into this. And when speaking of the impact it could have on the valley, I, I, I'd like to be frank when, when I say even though you, the golf revenue has seen a ninety five percent increase there, which I think is great, I, I still don't think that covers operating costs, which is saying something. And so then when I see a plan like this that tried and true over and over again in, in many states around the country can offer a ten to thirty percent increase in revenue, I, I'm, I'm hard pressed to understand how the city staff can turn their nose up at that. So, and I'm hoping that this is maybe part of what the, the mayor was talking about earlier, the complacency that happens sometimes when you're not looking at things with new eyes. And perhaps although I, like the mayor said, I, I respect the city staff's will at the moment or at this time. I would hope that we could have a more thorough discussion on this subject in the near future. Like I said, I, I find these numbers hard to ignore. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alfonso, for your comments this evening. If anyone else wishes to make a public comment at this time, please use the raise hand or star nine feature.
If I could only, only, the, the golf course, the, the, the discourse in Cary at New Hope Park, that is actually constructed on a park property, public park property, and it is unique in, in many ways. I, I, I do not know if the town of Cary actually was the investment in this or, or not, or if that was a Cary provided the property and there was a private developer. But I believe it, I believe it, I truly believe it was the town of Cary, but I think it was just on a on, on, on a, a pretty large piece of parcel. It's, I know it's, I think it's fairly close to the Tobacco Trail Greenway in Cary, but that was a, a public park concept. It wasn't actually on a on an established golf course.
We do have another public comment request. It looks like there's a caller with phone number showing us two one four zero five three seven. If you wish to make a public comment at this time, please state your name and address for the public record.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Greg Hargrave, seven seventeen Cannonade Drive in Wits, North Carolina. Can you hear me okay?
You can.
Great. I, I, I want to say good evening to you, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and City Manager, and of course, the entire council. And just to say thank you for your vote of confidence for the Apple Ridge Development. And I just felt I needed to say that tonight. Staff has been absolutely wonderful in this process even since back in June. And I just wanted to let you all know that we really appreciate it, and we're going to be good stewards over these funds and look forward to what we're going to do for affordable housing. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Greg. So, and if you see some of the other items, as Councilmember Butler encouraged us to do last evening, was to improve connectivity overall in that area. So we appreciate what you're doing to kind of build connections in the neighborhood, and we're going to do our part with some sidewalks along Melrose to bridge that gap over to North Park. So some great investment over there. All right. Any other public comments at this time? Please use the raise hand or star nine. All right. It looks like that concludes our public comments for this evening. At this time, we will move on to our city council comments. And the manager has a continuation from the manager comments yesterday evening, so I'll call on Manager Harden Watkins. And uh, the manager has a continuation from the manager comments yesterday evening, so I'll call on Manager Harden Watkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, not not a a whole lot of new information from the staff. Uh, we did provide a few documents to you via email, and I think maybe in your uh hand delivery packet uh this afternoon. Uh, just with a little bit more information about uh some of the statutes, Ms. Kelly clarified uh one of the statements um that we kind of have some conflicting information between league staff and school of government staff. Uh, I think you've got all that information in your packets. Um, and I think we have the uh, you have the sort of um uh bullet points um in favor of moving forward with elections in two thousand twenty one, and you have bullet points uh and statements in favor of postponing elections to two thousand twenty two. Um, so staff's here, uh, it's your pleasure to to help uh any way we can. Uh, and you all, you know, you want to have some discussion about whether or not uh to, I guess we have a couple of options um to s- to send a letter, not send a letter, uh, to wait uh for further information perhaps as it comes from Raleigh. Um, and we'll be happy to to help you with that in in picking any of the statements or bullet points that you would like.
Thank you, Manager. So clarification, we did have a discussion at the end of our work session yesterday regarding um the State Board of Elections' suggestion and the legislature's discussion about changing due to census information delay municipal elections for two thousand twenty one. Uh, and Councilmember Butler had to leave early, uh, and so Councilmember Owen requested that we add this to tonight's agenda um to allow Councilmember Butler any any comments or further whole council discussion. So Councilmember Butler, is there anything that you wanted to highlight related to this topic?
No, uh, I I thi- this is not a topic I thought about or even was aware of uh until, um, I guess uh Representative Riddell reached out to ask kind of a written statement from council, and I started dwelling on the subject. We've had a lot of council conversations around uh expanding council. We've had a lot of conversations, Mayor, I think you requested or somebody some information on the cost of elections and that sort of thing. I just took a more uh comprehensive approach to it. I think it was uh brought forth because of the uh census data. It really impacted those with uh maybe districts or reward systems or or that sort of thing. It really doesn't impact us, but just from a comprehensive standpoint, uh, you don't get many times for a trial run on something that just to see kind of how it does. Um, there's two things that stood out to me. One, it does seem like a little bit of a redundant of expense to uh have off your elections just for municipal purposes. And uh, obviously, that money could be better used for something else. And the other thing is, I think uh, as long as I've been involved in government from even boards and commissions on up through elected office, uh voter turnout from municipal elections has always been um, you know, moderate to poor at best. And uh, I I I would like to see uh more community involvement from just uh election turnout. And, you know, I I've expressed my comments to Representative Riddell personally, because he was inquiring about it. Um, but uh, it, I I have no uh, I'm not a cheerleader on either sideline, with the exception of you don't get an opportunity for a trial run at something very often. And that that's exactly what they're looking at doing here. And I was inquiring as to whether it'd be statewide or whether it would be in specific areas. Uh, in in speaking to uh s- some of council members concerning this topic, uh, it it was brought up about some of the confusions, and I definitely would not be an advocate of doing anything uniquely Burlington if it was not something that the other municipalities were interested in doing. I've expressed that to Representative Riddell as well, but um, that was just my thoughts on it. And um, I I would be in support of it if it indeed fits within the footprint of what uh the legislative body, which will have to give us enabling authority to do, and 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 if it is definitely something that the other municipalities would be interested in doing.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I have a question of, um, you brought up the costs, Jim, and I was thinking about that today. If we move that to twenty two, uh, wouldn't those costs still be uh referred to the city of Burlington anyway for a municipal election? It's, I mean, I I don't think that we would, there would be real cost saving, would there?
There's got to be, there's got to be some level of uh, there's got to be some level of uh efficiencies, I would think. I I, that's a great question. I I don't know uh the answer to that. I would just think from a uh that that there would be some levels of efficiency, but there may not be.
Manager.
I don't know, I really am just asking the question because I I don't know.
Ms. Hikes, uh, we have not uh inquired directly with the County Board of Elections. I I I'm, so I'm gonna kind of guess at an answer for tonight, and we can certainly check on that in the future before we we meet again to to know for sure. But if they're already conducting elections, you know, they've already set up their polling places, they already have their poll workers, they're already printing ballots. It seems to me that our our costs would just get absorbed. If we're the only, I believe, and and again, I'm 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 a little bit guessing here, but if we're the only thing happening on a given day, which we are on odd years because the county's on even years, and most of the state offices are on even years. If we're the only thing happening, then we get a bill, and it's a direct cost. I mean, they're not marking up or anything, but they just send us a direct cost bill for conducting the elections on our behalf, for their staffing, for their ballot printing, a- and 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 things like that. So I think if it, it seems to me that if it got rolled into an even year, the county's already, they're already there, they're already set up, the precincts are already set up. But we'll we'll confirm that to be sure, and I'll ask if if uh any of our other city staff have more knowledge about that uh from finance or or city clerk, if they're familiar with any communication with the elect- Board of Elections to jump in now.
Yeah, and that's that's kind of, that was sort of my school of thought as well, Harden, but uh stranger things have happened. It would be good to get some clarification on that.
Yeah, I just think they have to recoup their costs somehow, and so if they're not going to leave us out, I wouldn't think. But I'm just curious about it, I'm not drawing a conclusion about it.
I I think the issue that's out there, guys, that that that, you know, that that had, I'm not sure, and 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 Bob, uh, David could speak to this, that um, it appears right now that the um, if I'm not mistaken, that the Election Board, State Election Board, is the one that is um advancing the thought that all of the elections need to go to twenty two. Now, I do think there seems to be some uh disagreements or concerns at at um, and I can't speak to the school of government, but I I think maybe even at the uh, at the league about um the cities much like us that do not have uh, will not be impacted by the the Census Bureau, can can that election go forward? So I I think that that tends, it seems to me now at a state level, that's kind of where where we stand. And I'm not sure how that is going to be solved uh, and and, you know, who's going to agree to go which way? That's what I keep reading from from the information that I get.
Mr. Owen, that's correct, and I think we were all alerted to this. I think there was a news story early last week uh that then generated uh some email traffic from the Metro Mayor's uh staff. Uh, and that's when I think we alerted uh council members that this was a question. So I would say Monday of last week, we didn't know this was going to be a conversation for this legislative session. Uh, we have a uh Metro Mayor's has forwarded out the uh PowerPoint slides that the North Carolina State Board of Elections presented uh to the Legislative Committee that Representative Riddell is on. Page fourteen of that slide, which I think we put in your packet. Um, it offers a recommendation uh from the State Board of Elections. Uh, and it says um, the recommendations are to move all two thousand twenty one municipal elections to two thousand twenty two. Um, and then calls out move the twenty two, twenty twenty two elections to a May third primary, July twelfth second primary, and November eighth general election. Um, and then that's where I think now we've been asked for some opinions about that. I think the uh our communications with league staff uh are that uh the the league believes that there are lots lots of league members that do not want the change if they're not impacted by census data. That's what we've learned from the league staff. Um, you know, and I think you all have heard heard these arguments before. Um, you know, I think this is this is some information from the league. City issues may get lost in the rhetoric of bigger statewide elections. City um, some cities have changed their election. They had some uh anecdotal stories from the league that cities had changed in the past to um eve- uh even years and switched back to odd. And that uh there was some fear uh from some league members that city elections in a presidential year uh would end up being more partisan, and city issues are not partisan. That's, I that's not Harden's opinion, I'm I'm sharing with you some information we got from from uh, what the league says they're hearing from their members. Uh, the only elections that would have to be moved based on state law, this is league information as well. The elections that that have to be moved uh are obviously those that require redistricting because you don't know um how to uh adequately uh put those in the district. And and school of government and the league do agree uh certainly on that point. Um, the league did note uh that the city already can move, we can move our elections to even number years if we would like to now. So it has nothing to do with the census. If we were interested in that now or in future years, uh, all we have to do is ask legislators uh to introduce a local bill on our behalf and move us to an even year election cycle. So whether uh whatever happens with the, I think there are sixty two cities in the state that are um need of census data, and then is, that leaves uh maybe four hundred some that that are not relying on census data. Any of the, any of the non sixty two group certainly can ask the legislature to be moved if they would like to. So that was another point the the league was clear about, and like I said, they, I think they're in agreement with the school of government staff on that as well.
Well, I I think the question I would have on that, and surely the league u- understands that this is not something that they're wanting to do on a permanent basis. This is just a one-off deal. So um, y- you know, we've had a lot of discussions around some changes that we would, you know, like to look at or explore or 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 that sort of thing. There's just not very many uh opportunities to sort of, I'll use the term again, kind of get a trial run at something just because it's being uh served up uh by the State Board. Um, it just appears to me that no harm, no foul, because we're not cha- we're not talking about changing hours per- perpetually. We're just talking about sort of going with the flow if that's indeed what they want to do. And I would be uh 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 curious enough to see just how that would behave based on on, one, if we could save some money, and two, if higher voter turnout did have uh, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see higher voter turnout, I really would.
Do we have any indication of primaries? I know that the bullet point mentions the two thousand twenty two primaries would be move, would be May third and July twelfth for a second primary, but we don't even have our filing till July, so our primary is October. So would our primary still be its own municipal primary? And would that not be very confusing to voters that there'd be one initial primary, and then in another initial primary for separate offices, and then the general election?
I guess that's a valid question, Ian. I I I, to me, there's a lot of devil in details here that philosophically has been thrown around, but uh, you know, and I I don't know if it's uh, you know, how, I I think that's the issue that uh, since we got a couple attorneys on the screen here is the other question is uh, um, you know, the the people up for election in November were elected for that term. Uh, does it, from a a legal standpoint, I mean, uh, do they have the right to stay in office until the next election?
Okay, Harold, let me weigh in on that, Harold. I I think probably, you know, what Harden said, let me pick up on that. In other words, you could actually, we could, if we wanted to go twenty, you know, twenty two, we could actually do that now. It would require a charter amendment. And I think probably, you know, e- either, I mean, of course, we we might be forced to go twenty twenty two simply because the General Assembly made that, may say that's what we're going to do. Uh, but if the if, let's assume, let's assume that uh they don't take that action, and it only impacts those, what, the sixty two cities, we still have the option of going twenty, you know, going to twenty two. But even then, you got to work out the details about, you know, the terms, how will that, you know, I mean, it's there's a whole lot of details will have to be worked out. In other words, effectively, you'd have a mayor with a three-year term and a council member with a five-year term. And then it, how do you even add up? Do you work, you know, I believe I raised a question last night, do you council member run for the three-year term? You know, uh, the next time, and the mayor just for one-year term? I'm just not so sure, I I've thought about it, and I I I'm, I'm almost of the opinion to, you know, sort of wait and see what the sentiment is from the General Assembly. Because assuming, you know, the General Assembly will probably, well, I don't, they can't assume that they'll probably take some action, we don't know. But if they take some action, we may, we obviously got to, we've got to comply with whatever, you know, you know, they adopt. But let's assume that they don't adopt anything, and let's assume that we have uh, y- you know, that we want to just contemplate this as an individual city. You know, we still have that option. In other words, we we're not, we're not uh, we're not necessarily locked in. We can still ask to go to two thousand twenty two after we look at all the issues. And and I think, I think we really have have got a lot of issue here. Uh, of course, I, one issue that I'd like to see is I'd like to see the increase, you know, the number of council members. Of course, I don't know, I don't want to unnecessarily complicate, you know, the discussion tonight about that. But on the other hand, I guess, let me just sort of sum it up here. It, I think it may be some benefit in sort of waiting a little bit, see what the General Assembly do- does or dictates. And if it doesn't do anything, we still have the option of going to two thousand twenty two. And I I guess that's a, I guess that's a time consideration too, ain't it, David?
Certainly, but I I really think, Bob, you hit right on it there. The state legislature is going to do something here. They're not going to let these thing, these issues, these same questions are being asked by city councils all over across the state, and they're not going to let these issues not be answered one way or the other. Uh, so uh, i- if, the question really is, do you want to weigh in on any of these uh, these issues and try to influence the, what the state legislature uh does?
That's right.
Yeah, Bob, let me ask you a question. The the Board of Elections, uh, you know, that's uh, it's it's making this sta- statement about uh uh basically trying to get everybody to go to twenty two. Uh, help me with the, how, where they fall into the 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 authority here of power. Uh, obviously, the, I would think that they would uh would would, certainly the General Assembly would would be at another level. But how does all that play together?
Well, really, the bottom line, and I I'm just, you know, just, I haven't done any extensive research, but I don't think the Board of Election, I I think it has to have to be a General Assembly decision. I mean, I I don't, I I really don't think the Board of Election has the authority, you know, to sort of weigh in because you got five hundred and sixty some cities in the state of North Carolina. All of them would vary in, you know, the charter provisions. Uh, it it's, it it's going to require a a real comprehensive law to address this and just sort of getting, trying to get people signed up. I'm just, I'm just curious as to whether or not the Board of Election is sort of, sort of weighing in, uh, and this is sort of their way of trying to influence the General Assembly. I I don't, at the end of the day, the General Assembly got to make its decision. And and I I don't, I don't believe the Board, Board of Jackson, Board of Elections can sort of weigh in and say, we'd kind of like to see this, this makes sense. Uh, but eh, but at the end of the day, I I think, I think the General Assembly needs to give us, you know, give us options or or you could not an option, tell tell us what we need to do. And uh, you know, you may have to sort of wait it out a little bit just to see.
Yeah, I agree with Bob's comments. I mean, it may be a moot point anyway, if if we're going to have to do whatever the General Assembly says. But if if the General Assembly said, you know what, we're just not going to change anything, we're going to leave it like it is or or just change those uh sixty two or whatever that's affected by this. I I certainly won't, would not want to do anything uniquely different for the city of Burlington. But I, at the same time, I would not want to uh maybe go against the grain if if the General Assembly was wanting to go ahead and just do this thing across the board either. Because to me, I would be curious to see how it would look and feel. Would it save us some money? Would it create higher voter turnout? Um, but it really doesn't matter, it's it's in their hands anyway. Well, whatever the General, whatever the General Assembly. Well, whatever the general, whatever the general assembly decides technically will creature of them, of, of their power.
Right.
Is that not correct?
Yeah, that, that, that's absolutely clear. In other words, they actually, quite frankly, they could, you know, uh, they, they could do, they could, they could do away with the city of Burlington. In other words, if they could de-incorporate us and just put us out of business and not, that's not much likelihood that that would occur. But they, you know, all the power we have comes from, you know, the, the general assembly. And if they wanted to, they can create cities and, and they can dissolve them. And just like all the laws we have, they're delegated us and notwithstanding the fact that we have charter authority, you know, they could come along and, uh, they, well, they could, they could repeal our charter and we could just no longer be, uh, no longer be a city. I mean, that's, that's pretty radical. But, uh, at the end of the day, I, I don't know. I, I've thought about it a lot. At the end of the day, I'm almost of the opinion, we sort of roll with it here a little bit and see what the sentiment, you know, of the general assembly is. And, you know, if we needed to tell Representative Riddell anything, we just tell him that we, we know we're a creature of the state and we know we, we're going, uh, you know, we're going to comply with whatever required of us. And, uh, certainly if there's nothing required of us, we, we will certainly retain our charter options and we do whatever we want to. We can look at it like Jim suggests, you know, get some more facts and figures and sort of look at this. And if we want to, want to test it, we still, we'll still have that option, uh, assuming we're not directed otherwise by the general assembly. I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm of the position, we just sort of lay back here, get a little more information and come at it again. And, um, and talk more.
I don't know that I agree with the idea of laying back. Um, I'm, I'm reminded of when we kind of restarted our own election conversation a few months ago. Uh, and I recall just about our entire council expressing concerns about whatever we do, if we choose to change our charter, we should absolutely not do it in an election year. Uh, because that would just create voter confusion and we need to be really intentional.
Well, I, I agree with that. We did say that, but that was bef- bef- when we were talking about unilaterally doing it.
But that applies here too, which is, I mean, if.
Yeah, I would disagree. It's different.
Really important if we're going to be mucking with elections. Um, I, I think it's very prudent that we recommend to the legislature that it not be, uh, an urgent change for cities that don't need that urgent change.
Yeah, I think it would create more confusion generally if some municipalities were, were going to change and some were not. I think, I would like to see it all, or, or I, I'd like to see it be just all encompassing. But I think that would be a much easier explanation, but I think this is radically different, Ian, than what we were discussing.
I, I think you got to consider, just let me weigh in for a second. I, I think that was said in a different context.
Yeah.
In other words, it, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't said in a context of just, you know, for all ages henceforth and evermore. It was said in the context of what was occurred, you know, our conversation at the time. But at the end of the day, I'll tell you this, whatever the general assembly does, that's what we have to do, period. And, and I'm not so sure. Of course, I, I guess it could. I, I guess, you know, you, you, and I don't want to get, you know, get to thinking, you know, whatever we say one way or another is going to turn to, turn to deal. But, you know, and if you feeling, I, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't necessarily feel inclined to, to weigh in on it myself, so.
And we're jumping back to the fiscal piece. I had the thought last night as this rolling, it's surrounding my mind. So yes, there is potentially a cost savings to the, the taxpayers through municipal money that's spent on elections. If there's some efficiency of an overlap, but I, I still think the primaries got to be sorted. Um, but the other thing is running in a, a campaign in an even year is just generally more expensive. And so I think ultimately elections for our municipal system would end up being more expensive overall when you factor in candidates having to raise money to cut through the noise of an even year election. And so for candidates to be able to approach this office from wherever they stand, whatever profession they come from, whatever passion and realm of our community, it would only make it more difficult. The candidates would have to raise more money to be able to really stand their ground in an even year election. Um, and I think that would just increase the barriers to people engaging in public service. Um, so while that isn't a direct cost to our city, it is part of that, that whole cumulative cost of elections. Um, and I think that's important to consider.
Well, I think with, with, uh, s- some of the, the traditional media that you typically see in, in bigger election years are not used by municipal candidates anyway. Um, you know, you don't see a lot of TV ads and you don't, you certainly don't see a lot of network TV ads. Um, so that's radically different, uh, uh, social media, uh, search engine optimization, websites, uh, uh, print media, it, it's not going to change. It's going to, the, the, the rates are, are, are standardized and it's just not going to change.
I would differ on that because we saw data from this past election where social media ad buyouts on YouTube and video ads and stuff like that, it was entirely swamped with campaign ads. Um, and there was actually a shortage in capacity for people to buy ad space.
I'll show you a trick to it.
Jim Butler's School of Government on Campaign Management.
No, just advertising, Ian, just advertising, buddy.
Just getting people on is a problem. I mean, we, we don't, last election, two of us were unopposed. You know, that, that's, uh, that's a problem there. That's a bigger problem than what we're talking about. Just getting people to be interested in doing this.
Well, they were scared to run against you guys, what it was.
You know, I didn't think it was all that bad. I mean, I could think of other things I'd want to complain about first.
That's pretty much what I'm coming with, but for you all, I think, I mean, I don't want to have, we're part of that.
And that's where I think the, the thing that Councilmember Ward's brought up before, which is districts i- is really a, a great way to create a stepping stone into municipal office. And if we want to be really intentional about increasing public engagement, we need to have discussions about things like, like districts to make it less intimidating to run for municipal office than to run an entire at-large campaign. Um, and that's why I think being more deliberative about this and less kind of, well, it's whatever the legislature does, it's going to happen and maybe it'll be good for our democracy, maybe it won't. I mean, I, I think we really need to be really intentional about how we protect our democracy and how we make sure that our elections work for the intentions of our community and the goals for our community. Because this is our city and it's our responsibility to do what's in our city's best interest and not just hope that somebody else has our best interests in mind for our community.
Well, I was somewhat surprised by, I was, I was really surprised, frankly, by the, the, the number, uh, that was listed of only sixty, was it sixty-two? Uh, cities that would be impacted by this because of the census? So they, they were ones that have to be doing district elections, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So what that tells me is then that, uh, the five hundred and sixty cities, uh, five hundred and forty cities, and of course, there's some of this based on, on size. You've got, uh, less than ten percent of the people of the cities that's doing district elections in North Carolina.
Right.
But I think you also need to look at kind of where does Burlington stand? We are what, the seventeenth largest municipality in the state? So we, we are within that top ten percent of, of communities in the state and we lead with what we do. Um, and so when you look through some of those municipalities in the list, I think on Coats Cannons and the, the list of cities who really need some direction, it is primarily the larger cities. So as Burlington has grown, we've pushed ourselves into that bracket.
So.
But that's, that's, that's certainly a discussion that I have. I mean, I, I.
I think that's why I, I kind of brought it up and I appreciate Councilmember Ward's kind of lifetime dedication to keeping an eye on, on how we maintain democracy in our community. Um, and I, I fully support us having a really intentional sit down to talk about what are our goals with our charter and how it structures our elections and the format of our council. And as our communities grown, have our needs for our council format changed? Um, but I think the prudent thing is that that be a very intentional discussion, not a kind of, hopefully somebody else has our best interests in mind, which is what I fear we're kind of treading into on this one.
Well, I, I didn't, you really, when I proposed going to seven members, I wasn't waiting back for somebody to tell me that. That was my idea at the time.
And I think it's really.
I think it's a good idea then. I still think it's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I really want us to engage in that discussion and, uh, unfortunately, that, that all of a sudden the spotlight's been turned to even year elections. When I think we, we had our eyes set on the more effective change, which was increasing council size and potentially having districts.
It was turned to an even year election for a vastly different reason though. Two, two, two separate conversations, two separate discussion points.
Well, you know, no matter what side of it is on, the, the, the pandemic situation is just the impacts and, and, and it'd be interesting how history will, will look back at this in terms of how it has impacted so much of what our country's about. And this is just one small part of it in terms of what we are right now. I, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't really think there's sides taking, people taking sides one way or the other is. But, but like Bob says, we're a creature of the state, so, uh, unless we don't succeed, and I'm not sure where we're going, but, uh, uh, you know, we're gonna have to see what happens.
I think if we were going to make any statement to, um, Representative Riddell, that, that we would, we'd be okay with this if it were temporary. That this, that this was because of the unique situation that we're in. And that it would be an opportunity for us to check it out. But on a temporary basis instead of by caveat, so that we're locked into this. Because it's very complicated. I'm, I'm curious about how all the moving parts would work with the people like me and Bob, who would be then running in twenty-three. Well, do, do we add another year on at that, at that point? How, how did we get back into the right kind of schedule? Um, it's not, it's not an easy fix. So if there's anything that we need to say, I would say, could we just have this be temporary by the legislature till we get our ducks in a row and figure out how this is going to work for us?
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing them back. And so maybe we can find some consensus items that we can include in a, a letter to Representative Riddell, where we do have agreement. I think the, as, as Kathy put it, we've, we've all discussed that if this is a change, it should be temporary. Can, do we have consensus agreement on, on that request to the legislature?
I think, I, I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't think they have any intentions of anything but making it temporary, based on what I've heard.
I think it's, it's good to just put that in writing.
I, I, I certainly think some, you know, temporary, temporary is good for me. I, I'm, I, I'd kind of like to stay in control of our own elections too. And then if the state does what it does, you know, we'd ask that it be temporary. Then we can get back to, you know, more comprehensive discussion and figure out our own direction. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want, I, we, we need to encourage the, the, the general assembly, at least our position should be, and, and I agree with Kathy, should be of a temporary nature. We, we don't want it, we don't want to be locked down for the next forty, fifty years, whatever.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that too. Yeah.
Do we have, I think, I can fairly say that we have consensus that we could include that we do not rely on census data for our elections.
I, I think that's pretty.
Didn't even like to.
We got that one.
I think we, we, I, we locked in on that.
Why can't argue that one with us now?
If I could suggest another bullet point then, and that's kind of building on Councilmember Ward's point, which is that we appreciate local control. We recognize that we are creatures of statute as granted by the legislature, but we appreciate a local authority to draft our charter. Is that a reasonable, staff can nuance that.
You know, I, I, I think before we send a letter, anything in writing, as Bob used to tell me, when, once it goes out, it's there. Uh, we, we really need to, uh, uh, and I know Dennis wants something in writing, but I, 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 I think we got to be real careful with how that's, what exactly is said, because that's, that's, uh, how it's interpreted. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm going to go back to David and, and Bob on that one, from the attorney's side. Am I, am I wrong on that?
Well, I, you, you, I, I think you got to be very careful in, 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 in what you're saying. And I, I mean, you, you don't, you, I guess he wants us to take a position, but we don't want to qualify it to the point he doesn't have some notion of where we are. And I think we can say it. I, I think maybe Harden, Rachel, David, go back to the board, put something together and circulate it. And, and, you know, because I think, I think it'd be good for all of us to have some kind of comfort level once we fire something off to Dennis. And so maybe they could crank something out and get it, get it to us and, and probably even, you know, Thursday morning when we get together, you know, you know, if everybody's on board with that, with, with the point, we feel like we've reached some consensus and maybe, maybe we could hammer it out. I mean, I, I don't know that we can, but, uh, and, and Harold, you're right. I think we just, you know, we need, need to make sure that we, we're all really solid, you know, set on a thing and, and that would be a next good move, in my opinion, I, I think would be to just sort of see it in print and get it before us and, and think about it, you know, some more.
Would it be worth including in that some of our, our major questions? I think the primary question is, is huge of kind of how do primaries get structured? Um, but if council members have any items that they want to bring up right now to include their, um, empowering a representative to ask good questions in those discussions, I think is a, a actually more beneficial overall.
I'd just like to see it pretty simple. Uh, we got no problems with it as long as we can. Uh, it, it is, uh, not perpetual and we can, obviously we're not dependent upon a census. I agree with that. But, um, if we just keep it pretty simple and to Kathy's point, it's as, as long as it is a one-shot deal and they're not trying to, to do something perpetual. I don't have a problem, uh, keeping it simple.
One, one statement you all made, uh, during this conversation, I'll ask this, uh, I think I heard somebody say, we don't want to do it if we do or do, we do or do not want to do it based on what other communities around us. And, and I, I mean, I think we were implying county, um, you know, Times News, Alamance News, media market communities. Do y'all want to offer an opinion to Representative Riddell about that? That we want folks in our, we want to be aligned with folks in our, in our, in our media market?
I think that's important to not have confusion of one municipality being even and one being odd. So to calcify that and say, we, we wish to be, um, kind of in collaboration with our fellow municipalities.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. We don't need to do something uniquely different for us compared to those. Um, you know, and, and, and I, I specifically spoke with him about those in the county, but.
Yep.
Um, certainly we, I, I would not be an advocate of doing anything uniquely different.
Okay, then we'll, we'll use that language, Alamance County.
I, I agree. I, I think we need to be consistent with our, with our neighbors here. I really do.
Yep. You know, if, if you, if you look at the, the growth of Greensboro to the, to the east and then you got Sodalia, Gibsonville, I mean, uh, and then you go further from Greensboro even to the west, uh, along the quarters, uh, just the number of communities that's almost attached to each other. All, all the way down the central part of the state. It's, it's pretty amazing. Uh, and you know, I, uh, municipal growth is there, but, but, you know, in the end, Bob, i- 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 it's, uh, you know, I read my question is who's carrying the torch? Uh, to the general assembly? Is it, uh, is it the league? Is it, uh, school of government? Is it the Elections Board or any idea?
My understanding is the Elections Board's the one that started the conversation with the recommendation to go ahead and move everybody to twenty-twenty-two because of those who rely on the census.
Okay.
I think that's exactly right. I, I think, Rachel, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think, I think that's sort of moving it. And don't you think too, they're sort of, sort of encouraging the general assembly to? I think that's sort of moving it. And don't you think too, they're sort of sort of encouraging the General Assembly to to pick up on the recommendation? Is that your sense of it?
That's my understanding. I think the the league and communities like us are reacting to that recommendation.
Yeah. Other items that we want drafted into that letter for folks to take a look at and we'll discuss more on Thursday?
I'll let, ask Mr. Huffman, uh, since this is our first effort at a public hearing continuance. Are we also with open meetings allowed to discuss this topic in a, in an open meeting?
Well, I think you just make a decision. You're going to continue this conversation on Thursday morning at nine fifteen.
Yeah, I think so. You just just, it it would be an agenda item.
Yeah.
Other items for staff to continue to work on or include in that? Otherwise, I'll I'll entertain an official motion to continue this discussion uh, at the Thursday meeting.
Mayor, before you may, let me see if Mr. Huffman or Ms. Kelly have any, would would y'all like any clarifications or any further, they're gonna, the three of us will take a stab at drafting.
There's a lot of note taking, so I appreciate all of that.
Lots of note taking.
The video.
Any other clarifications?
It's all on video.
David, when when have you talked to to Dennis?
No, I have not.
My 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 question is, what committee, is this thing assigned to a committee or is this just floating around in the legislature now?
I expect Rachel may know, is this some sort of subcommittee that he's a, he's a member of?
Yeah, my understanding is it's like an elections committee and they've assigned that discussion to that group.
It was assigned to that committee, I noticed.
So that committee was already there?
Correct. There's an Elections Committee in the House. Uh, my understanding is the they, the Board of Elections was making a presentation to them. And there were fourteen, fourteen slides in the presentation. Thirteen slides were more about uh, looking back at history, a report about what happened in two thousand twenty. Here's how we managed, you know, voting during twenty twenty. I guess reporting back on some other things the General Assembly may have asked them about. And then the final slide was the slide that's in your packet that recommends looking forward to twenty twenty uh, one and twenty twenty-two. So the Metro Mayor's staff reached out to us um, and said, hey, this is happening. Um, we noticed that your representative, Representative Rydell is on that committee. Um, if you all have an opinion, uh, in case you haven't heard about this, because this is all catching everybody kind of by surprise, you all may want to share your thoughts with your representative. And that's where it started for us.
Thank you.
Onto Kate, I I spoke with our representative last week as well, and he was appreciative of any further information because they had kind of tasked the members on that committee to kind of what is the state of your your municipalities in your district? So this helps him just be more aware of the nuances of charters for our municipalities. So. All right, um, any other items on this? Do I hear a motion to continue this to Thursday's meeting?
Move we continue?
Motion to continue this item, aided by Mayor Portem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to continue? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with those for myself, Mayor Portem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. That can concludes our regular, and we're still technically in council comments, so I will ask if there's any other council comments this evening?
I I have, I I failed to mention it last night, but um, you know, uh, Mike None had brought, we got three items that's been added, you know, zoning items has been added to March the sixteenth. That's going to be a pretty heavy night. And Mike, I don't know where you can hear me, not were they three hearings, you you know, the three zoning matters you brought up last night, have they already been published? The notice, do you know?
They have not, they've not been sent out yet.
Okay. The re- reason I bring it up, I don't, I don't know whether the members of the council want to consider bumping some of that to to April or not, but anyway, we know at least a couple of those hearings on the sixteenth. Uh, it, you know, may, I I don't know they'll get long, but they're certainly I I believe they're going to be contested and I don't know about these, but I I was, I just throw the question out, is anybody interested in, you know, actually setting these hearings, you know, to sometime, you you know, you know, for April and avoid that? Uh, you know, having all of these five or six hearings that same night?
I mean, I'll share my my preference, especially when we're talking about people investing money in our community is is not to delay them to allow their projects.
Okay, that that's fine. I, you know, that that's fine with me. Uh, you know, I I that that's okay. I just I didn't know whether, I didn't know whether there was any interest in doing that or not, so.
Other council thoughts on that?
If we knew of of something that was not necessarily time sensitive and and there was some uh, if we knew that to be a fact, I I would support that, Bob. I I you know, there may be something on that agenda that's not as urgent.
And and you know, the the very, very well could be. I, and maybe maybe we can defer to Mike. Has anybody, has anybody said, is it, you know, the any urgencies of this, any kind of financing? In the in the wing or is just a whole notion of just wanting to expedite it? Of course, if you want to expedite it, we could call a special hearing, couldn't it? But a forty-eight hour notice, couldn't we? I can't, I don't get you cause of the zoning, but I guess if there was some some urgency, uh.
No, just the normal, you know, just the next, when's the next date? I mean, that's a typical question from the Africa.
Okay.
Mr. Ward, I would, one other suggestion I may offer, if you you could bump the meeting time forward, I know that you and Mr. Butler have a TAC meeting that evening and maybe begins at five P M. If you could predict, and maybe Mike could help us predict the end time of that, uh, one option at least to to get us out of the meeting a little earlier that evening could be to start a little earlier. Um, since we are in virtual format, I guess our attendees are not commuting to Burlington, so.
I believe you've already noticed some of the notices they've gone out for these public hearings. And those will be for seven o'clock at the regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council.
Maybe not at this time, but something to consider in future meetings if we do have a busy agenda.
The three that you were just, we just discussed last night would be the ones, would be the ones that would be in play.
Correct, Mike. That's correct.
Yeah. Not hearing any further discussion. It's reasonable that those stay on the March sixteenth agenda.
I I, Jim, uh, you you and I will just get there when we can. You know, we go to the TAC, then we, you know, yeah, again, like I said earlier tonight, y'all go ahead and get started. We'll be there sometime.
Yeah, there you go.
I I do, that kind of led me to a point that, and when we were talking with Peter about the mongoose project, um, he indicated some challenges related to the reuse grant schedule. Um, and maybe Peter's still with us and he could enlighten us, but I I would just like to kind of bring up, if we start to get into a bottleneck where we've got something like the the reuse grant schedule and it's not timing up with our meetings in a a very functional way, um, I mean, I would like to empower staff to to help us understand that we may need to call special meetings. Because we recognize that economic development is a really competitive and time sensitive world. Um, and we've done a lot to try to empower Peter and his team to be effective, but if something about our schedule and our timing for meetings i- is holding them back, I I would like to call on them to just be empowered to to ask us to call special meetings if need be. So Peter, are there bottlenecks that you run into with the the timing of some of those grants?
We make every effort to plan around them and a lot of the schedules are organized to meet certain dates. Um, sometimes the there, there is a schedule pincher, a time is of the essence situation where uh, it may be warranted, but um, uh, we we tend to respect the regular schedule of council and and meet that as often as we can.
We appreciate that, but when you're talking about four million dollar investments in the community, I think and uh, protecting heritage and built infrastructure like a mill like Lakeside. I mean, I for one am in favor of us kind of helping enable those very challenging projects any way we can. Other council comments or thoughts on that?
I don't think anybody disagrees with that.
No, I don't disagree either. Yeah, I it's just how we get it done. Uh, you know, there's a wheel, there's a way.
All right, any other council comments this evening?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye. Are we continuing or adjourning?
We, there've been enough continuances this evening. Um, we get to see all of each other in less than forty-eight hours. So with that motion, uh, we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. And we'll see everyone on Thursday at nine fifteen A M via Zoom again. Take care.
Night everybody.
Good night, y'all.
Night everyone.